Yeah, the flag's. I'm ready. 6:30.
Okay, it is 6:30. Welcome, everyone. This is the regular meeting of the Arlington City Council, May 4th, 6:30, and welcome you all here. And at this time, would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance? A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, ever and just. Thank you, everyone. Move to live role call. Councilmember Omriyan.
Here.
Councilmember Batson.
Here.
Councilmember Morgan.
Here.
Councilmember Haddelstead.
Here.
Councilmember Gilman.
Here.
Thank you. Also at the table with us this evening is the administrator, Amy Newsom on my left, and on by audio is the city attorney Ross Ernest. And again, if you haven't signed in, please do so. Okay, at this time, I would entertain any changes or additions to the agenda.
I have three additions. The Sibley's Senior Parade.
That will come under the.
Number, they will adjust it under the council, but they're asking that we take action on it this evening, so it would come under New Business. I have the addition of Jane Romaker as a full-time city employee at $17 per hour plus benefits.
That would be under.
New Business. And number 20, under New Business, Michael Kudrowski, wage change to $21 an hour, plus change in his job description to work on the community center. And I have one more addition. Actually, I have four. I have one under the consent agenda to accept the resignation of Lexi Stock from the Arlington Public Library and post.
That you propose under the consent.
Consent agenda. That would be F.
Okay, any other changes? Seeing none, a motion is not to approve the agenda as amended.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion by Councilmember Omriyan, second by Councilmember Haddelstead to approve the consented or to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor say aye. Or is no? Motion carried. Moving to the consent agenda. Item four is a consent agenda and consists of the following items: approval of the bills, item B, approval of the April 9th, 2020 GI waste water minutes, item C, approval of the April 20th, 2020 city council minutes, item V, April 29th, 2020, special city council minutes, item E, accept resignation of Tony Voight from Arlington Fire Department effective June 1st, 2020, and then lastly, item F, approve resignation of Lexi Stock from the Arlington Library.
Effective June 1st.
Effective June 1st. Motion by Councilmember Batson, second by Councilmember Haddelstead to approve the consent agenda as amended. All those who say aye. Or is no? Motion carried. All right, moving on to the addressing the council. I believe there's someone representing the group that is planning a, would like to plan a parade for the graduation. Would you please come forward and present your ideas? Just come up here and sit at the table. Okay.
So, I guess what we kind of like to do is we'd like to have a parade honoring seniors for some of these graduates. I've talked with Mr. Harder over a little bit this afternoon today, and they're going to be possibly doing a virtual ceremony or possibly a live ceremony, depending on Governor Walz and what's going on. We'd like independently after one of those things, have a parade basically for the, for the kids where we have a maybe anywhere from five to 10 volts, which would basically be trucks, those trailers, and then do, they have to keep the six-foot distance, the trailers, the trailers, the veils set up, and then just start a parade.
Everyone should have received.
This is something that we kind of came up with back then, to have a long row, so that plenty of people could see it without. So we have, so we can keep the social distancing respect for the safety of everybody. And then it would start at the ballpark and follow around. So we need a little bit of help with traffic control, possibly.
And I did speak with Chief Patterson. It looks like he left. He was fine with it.
Okay. I noticed too, you're staying clear of any highway.
I make it simple, just something for the kids, so, you know, they've done a lot of virtual stuff already, and if they come to a virtual ceremony, besides, they may actually have something where they can at least pray through. We'd like to, maybe if we could get the 30-year old.
Well, typically, I don't ask the council to ask questions, but being you're here now, and we will take this up for a decision later in the meeting. Is there any concerns or questions members of the council have at this time?
We figure on one trailer, if we do one trailer, we get approximately 16 kids, that would 45 foot trailer. If we have a 25 foot trailer, we could probably get 12 kids. So that's kind of what we're talking about doing. I think we've got enough other communities support where we can turn trucks to be a parade. Should be fairly simple.
And you'll be going through some of the residential areas?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it kind of works well, so if it does go the virtual method, we could do the parade that way, or if it goes where they can actually. And when I talked to Mr. Harder and Amson about this, they have some ideas, but it's all, they're really not going to be able to do anything until they get the. Until they give a pretty long answer.
Questions for the group?
I have just one. What is your name?
Brad.
Thank you.
Okay, well, we have a new business, so we will be making a decision about that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak to the council at this time? Yes.
Lisa Bass, Public Arlington. I believe I've got my email, so I'll try to keep this part short. We'll get a time to look at it and get the timeline. People wonder why I stay on this issue, and this is not me being against Northland wanting to get them shut down. The city has been so on everyone in the community about cleaning up property and safety and all these other issues. These items that we keep bringing up, they are safety issues. They are violation issues, and they are ordinance issues that are not continually followed through with Northland. When I sent that first email asking about that water pit, Amy and I took a picture of, Amy Berger and I took a picture of that water pit and brought it up to the city last May, pictures and all, about the safety issue, what if a kid were to fall in there? Only a week later to find out about the dog that had fallen in there. Yes, the vet verified that dog drowned. I talked to the family. That poor dog, the cats on its feet were completely scraped and shot from trying to scrape its way out of that water pit. So family lost their dog in that water pit that should have had a more permanent fence put up over a year ago. I did talk to the chief about it. He said he talked to Northland a few times about hitting that fence put up. I have verification that Northland said they put a snow fence, a temporary fence up, but they would get something more permanent. There's documentation that every single thing that I have packed about and nothing gets followed through on. They still have all their junk sitting out, metal, crud. If it was my property, I would have already gotten a citation. So now we get into the citation issue. The police, their hands are tied. We've consistently been told, we don't even know who owns a Northland. Chief John and Tragney have Northland tickets for the noise. Those got thrown out of court. Why'd they get thrown out of court? Because the tickets were wrote out to Josh Howell. Their attorney said, well, I'm not a majority shareholder. I'm not responsible for having this ticket or paying for it, so those tickets were thrown out. So I feel like the police have their hands tied, and that's part of the reason with the water pit, that they never got a citation to take care of that or any of the other stuff. I'm just wondering, like, what is going on that the building inspector is not following through on these inspections? Allowed to keep these permits open, allowed to keep doing all this work. Nobody's following through on anything. And I don't know what's going on with the new dryer. I didn't, Michael didn't call me back today, but he did tell me on Thursday that they have not the permit for the new big dryer they brought in. Whether or not that's even getting installed yet, who knows? I mean, it just seems like this is, this is a company that nobody knows what's going on there. They're just doing whatever, and it's just being allowed to happen. And I'm wondering what's going to have to happen to that stuff. Luckily, that little, that little kid's daughter went and broke the leash and got off. Luckily, that little boy didn't follow that dog and follow that fist. You guys would have a huge lawsuit on your hands right now, the city and Northland, because all of that was verified through pictures and complaints on record at City Council meetings and police reports. I mean, it's time that you guys finally do something about all the crap that's going on down there to make sure that they're following all the rules and it's all being done legally, safely.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Anyone else?
Hi, guys. Burger, 24 Henderson Road. I'm just saying, pretty much, you know what Lisa said. I've also been contacting the family. I was absolutely mortified that that happened, that we had to get to that point. We all, city members, as police departments, councils, mayors, everyone. You guys were all excited, but please, I'm sometimes not so excited. You know, the things with Northland that, I might, first of all, my neighbors can't be here tonight, so I'm speaking out on behalf of myself, Kellerman's, and another, another thing from the Fishers. The trailers we discussed last week, in the minutes, you guys, something in there about resuming that, and I thought we were all against that. Wondering why that was in the minutes, if it was discussed after we were here. I don't plan on leaving City Council meeting until it's done from this point on, because we guys are discussing things about something that we've discussed, we want to know about it. Residents Henderson Road, wait until those trailers be gone. Don't know where you guys are at then, and let's see the agenda to see if that's out there. What do we do if some tenants that are living there are in there, or start coming in? Something in the minutes Lisa brought to me saying that there hasn't been any of you living there the last couple of years? No, they've been there. Not as many, but there's been tenants there every single year. I bought my house five years ago. I was sold five years maximum on that. That horrible mess would be gone. It was cleaned up. One day, sideways lot, it was nicely cleaned up, and it's, again, atrocious, a mess. You know, like you all agree, the noise, the noises don't continue. So that's pretty much the trailer thing. Some ideas that I brought up through our little group on our block, thought that a community garden would be a good place for that. Solar panels, we can maybe work on some of our electricity here out here. The city can maybe buy that back from the solar panels there. That wouldn't cause any issues with the noise from Northland. The other one that was brought up, Denise Swanson had come to the city council about a year ago asking for a dog park. That's already pretty far fenced in, so that might not be a bad spot for a dog park also. And it wouldn't, the noise of Northland, it smelled Northland. Wouldn't bother us, us dog owners, to be there for that. For Northland's concern, I have quite a few friends, in the last two years, that have got pictures of cars and cameras parked on their grass. But you guys, as members of the city, employees, have police department go out with a camera, spend the money to take the pictures of the cars parked on yards, photocopy them in color, spend all that money and find those residents, if they did move them. Yet Northland, I would put the picture to be, that stuff's been there for over a year. On the corner, the whole corner's all rusted and torn into the ground, everything. And there's a lot of water sitting there. It's just an absolute eyesore. The last thing, the sex offender I was talking to, the Fishers this morning, the house has been sold. They saw him move out. Anybody know where he went? You guys aware that he moved?
I just saw the storage bed deal in front of his house.
He's gone. Do we have any idea where he is? Because I know we're working on the, the new bubble thing where they can't, he can't move into the community, but he gets his grandfather in because he was here before we're getting this place again. Again, you guys waited till the last minute. I had to remind you guys in November, December, that that date was coming up, and here we are, right up the wire again. Now, we got the, the Corbin saying, can we get into work, get it done before that is done. I don't know if Ross Artis can answer that or not. But that's just, we waited till the end, and we're waiting for way too many things to happen, and accidents like this dog. Why are we, why are we allowing, why are we allowing this, those kind of things to happen for certain people in town and not others?
Can I ask you something?
Yep.
I honestly don't know. What did this dog eat?
I believe it's getting 22.
I didn't know.
We didn't either. It was just someone in the mind of Denise's lap. People weren't out hunting for this information. So when we put it on Facebook and asked what was going on with it, we were hunting at it to slander anybody, to jump at anybody, to blame Northland, to blame anybody. We think everybody in this room, including our police department, should, should hold some responsibility for that. Because we brought it to everyone, but actually, nothing got done. And when I talked to Jennifer, the lady who, she, all she, all she could do was hold her tears back, saying, thank God my son didn't go follow him and get in there too. And I talked to the ground too, the claws of the dogs were just shredded from that dog, and it was a German Shepherd. It wasn't a little small dog like I got. You know, I, my dog gets, gets right up on my car. I'll hold that responsibility, getting off the leash, but something like that should never happen. So I'm not real happy with any of it. To tap into that family cry and be so upset for something that we brought to your guys' attention on May 7th of last year, really is frustrating. So I hope we can get out there a little bit faster.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, seeing none, we will move on to announcements.
First announcement, the only announcement we have right now is volunteer opportunities at the local assisted living, senior living centers. This was brought up by Councilmember Morgan, Ask About It, and then we talked about it in the office, and it ended up in going into the water bill in the newsletter in the water bill. We reached out to the different assisted livings, Golden Hearts, Highland Commons, Good Sam, and they are looking for, they're really looking for things to entertain people that are stuck in there right now, that can't go do anything, so put it in the water bill if you're, if you're willing to donate some hours. The contact information is there. You can call each of the different places and see if there's something you can do.
Thank you. Communications?
A copy of the MMPA Board of Directors. We had a meeting in April. There's the public copy. It was included in the packet. Ambulance update, if we just want to keep going. That's a copy that was, I'll just keep going, that was emailed out from Sarah Burton. Copy of that in the packet. Copy of the email from Lisa Passwoggle was in the packet under communication.
Is there going to be updated figures as far as the runs ambulance has made and staffing?
I do have some information on that.
Okay.
What else was the town that was this morning? It said, I think it's 16 and 32 employees that had gone and actually created a survey. Was the survey results in there?
I have a copy of the survey results, but just a heads up, those weren't approved by the city before being sent to city SAP, and we don't know who filled them out. Was it Arlington residents filling it out? Was it Galer residents? We don't.
So it was residents?
It was EMTs, sorry. EMTs, not residents.
Okay, any questions on the communications? Very none. We'll move on to reports at an A Park Committee 2019 annual report. Mr. Eric.
Good evening.
So, I thought I would just give you a brief update of the Parks Committee, one of the things. Starting with committee members, so Eleanor Keon, the chair, Bob Thomas is the vice chairperson, Karen Pickleton is our secretary, other members, Gary Olker and Gary Eversviller, like Chris Dussa, and our council member. So, the other things I thought I would go over, just a little recap of 2019, and then kind of where we're headed for 2020. If you think back a year ago, very wet summer, spring, summer, fall. That really plays into what you're trying to get done, and have outdoor spaces that you're working with. But some of the things that we did accomplish, we are continually re, uh, renewing, repairing, covering new picnic tables for the parks. We're trying to buy a four-per-year, trying to get rid of some of that water, ones that get damaged throughout the year. We'd like to see that continue for a few more years at least, and see when it looks like we have everything but shit. We've tried to keep it to four, that seems to be pretty reasonable to me. This year, they shouldn't have done it to four of them, so. Reasonable, and we, again, we want to try to keep it down gracefully. Some of the other things were what you might consider maintenance issues. Mould chips, Sportsman's Park and Friendsville's Park, the playground area. We put rubber mats under the swings in the parks, because it's notorious that swings get a big dugout area in a wet year, it fills up with water, you know, mud hole, which kids probably like, but for the parents, so. So, I think those mats worked very, very well. I've taken my grandkids to the parks. I like them. On in Sportsman's Park, we added a, an equipment ship by the ball field there, and that was an equipment ship that we still provide students at the high school. Kind of a nice period between the city and the school. So, those were some of the major things. There may be some that I missed, but those were the ones that everything. So, looking ahead then to 2020. And this actually goes back a little bit into 2019. The Girl Scouts started a project at Four Seasons Park where they're redoing the, what I would call the dugout area on both of the ball fields. And so it started in 2019. We hope it is able to get completed in 2020, weather permitting and everything else. But I think that's going to be a nicer, the kids a lot nicer than what they have.
I think they have three of the four veterans sponsoring already, so they're meeting on the last bench and sponsoring. And then they just be a better reporter and stuff. I think the, the, Kirby must have been playing.
You can see the grass.
That's what I want.
And I'm not sure if they're, if that's all they had luck or not. They were waiting until they could get together to work on things, being known they're supposed to stay apart.
The pieces that they're doing now are pretty much individual, so they each, I think it was a pair of, for each of. Dunno, right? So then now we're just doing individual things on each other.
Okay.
But together.
So, another item at Friendsville Park, working on the ball field. They're redo the bases, get some red rock out there, and field. Manage the weeds that are starting to come up through the road. But that's continual maintenance. That stuff like Kirby deals with all the time. At our last meeting, he made the comment that he knows it's there. He'll get to it. He's got some other things that he wants to try. We decided at our last meeting, we're going to install ball poles at the ball field at Sportsman's Park. We're going to use some of the old power poles that the city was given. There's really no cost. We're going to try it as a low-cost solution. If it doesn't work, we'll have to work with something else, but we're going to try this. And then regular maintenance. Those are kind of our goals moving forward this year, so.
Now, you did, did you do an inspection this spring or last fall?
So, we did one last fall, and we hadn't really met since then, up until our last meeting last week. So, we did not have one this spring.
Is all the, as far as the playground equipment, that's nothing, none of it's really real neat? Always a little kind of shit. Is it holding up well? Is there any idea that it's?
I think it is, other than if there's bamboo.
Bamboo is.
Kirby keeps up on that. He knows when something needs to get us.
I know he had commented one time about parts that he used, so he couldn't, he could hardly get it anymore because the equipment was that old, so.
Probably there was a slash here that's broken on the current slide.
Oh, yeah.
Like that was down for probably two months.
I think he had to get a whole new slide.
No?
Or did he get these?
Yeah, maybe it was a little bit.
Thanks. Okay. Questions for Mr. Eric?
We appreciate your support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then we have a Public Works Department report by Kirby Wickley. He submitted one here.
It was in your packet. You have any questions on Kirby's report? Just a reminder, if you have concerns about anything with Public Works, please ask me.
I'm pleased to see that the number of streetlights that they, they've almost got along, which is.
That's impressive.
Imagining it would have taken longer.
Me too. Yes, you did.
Any questions on the report of Kirby?
That's the report, but I did see in the paper, everybody's looking for a worker. Is that right?
The next thing on the agenda?
Oh, yeah, okay.
That I will talk about. We've had three applications for that position. We'll be interviewing those three on Wednesday. Kirby and myself will interview. That's from Mike Wilson's job. He's retiring, remember? Yes, we approved that already at council a while ago, and. And we have, we had three applicants. Kirby and I spoke about it last Friday and today. We'd like to keep the position open until filled. We had set a deadline to apply for that, but I would like to, if we decide not to hire one of the three that we interviewed, to leave it open until filled.
Any questions on that? Okay, now we go on to ordinances and resolutions.
We have a resolution accepting a donation from the Arlington Fire Relief Association. This was for a change order to the truck. An amount of one thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-six cents, which they have given us a check for, but we have to pass a resolution to accept that.
So this, what was the change? It was just a, an overpayment, so to speak? Or what?
No, it was a change.
There was actually a physical change?
There was an actual change.
Okay.
I'll enter your resolution twenty-two twenty twenty, resolution accepting a donation from the Arlington Fire Relief Association as a banking excuse. On a four basis, I value us in two seconds.
It's one thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars and twenty-six cents.
One thousand one hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Correct.
Okay, resolution twenty-two dash twenty twenty, which is by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Morgan. And it is a resolution accepting a donation from the Arlington Fire Relief Association from the Buzzing Oldies Use, the amount to get one thousand one hundred seventy-two dollars and twenty-six cents. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call. Councilmember on line.
Yes.
Councilmember Batcher?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilman?
Yes.
Councilmember Hattleside?
Yes.
Councilmember Morgan?
Yes.
Five votes in favor, none against. The resolution is about ready. Under unfinished business, I intend discussion on parking changes on Friday, vote three before the next year's project.
I'd like to invite county engineer Tim Becker to come forward.
Tim, how are you?
Good evening.
Do you want me to fill in, mayor?
Yes.
We, the mayor and I actually met with Rob Brow, Brow Motors today. He had concerns and I did let Tim know what his concerns were as well. He has concerns that there'll be less parking across the street, across the street from Brow Motors by the dental office is what will change from. From, to parallel, from, what's it called, diagonal parking to parallel parking. And he has concerns that the employees from the dental office are going to be parking across the street, taking up their parking spaces. And he was counting about three less parking stalls if it changes to parallel parking. That's what his concern is. And he asked if the city couldn't move ahead with asking for a variance to keep diagonal parking on that side of the street. If we, yeah, if you would move ahead to try to get a variance.
Um.
And I see Adam Cowell is on the line. Adam, can you hear me? Did you want to add anything?
Adam?
I'll, I'll listen for now.
Okay.
Okay, um, so City County's looking at doing the Millenore Lake Reservation project on County State Avenue thirty-four from County Road nine over to Trump Highway five. We have one block in there where the street is slightly wider as between Fifth Avenue and Sixth Street. That's where it's at. The rest of the road is about forty feet in width. The width between Fifth Avenue and Sixth Avenue is close to. Parking situation in that one block area right now is a mix and match where parking right next to the dental place is parallel parking. Parking on the south side right next to Browler Motor is diagonal parking. Parking on, I'd call it like the northwest portion of the street, that's diagonal, yeah.
In front of the, there's two residential.
Three homes.
Three homes.
Three homes.
Mm-hmm.
State has recommendations for what width the street needs to be to have diagonal parking on both sides. Right, I believe that width sixty-eight, so we're about ten feet short of what it really needs to be. If you look across the road, Main Street to the east, that width is around sixty. And the city worked with the county back in nineteen eighty to actually get a variance. The parking over there is pretty steep or pretty strong angle. People do have a little bit of trouble backing up and stuff. But because we have that existing variance, we can move forward with a Millenore Lake Atlanta and paint the diagonal width we have. I think we did a project over there about four years ago. With this side of the street, that variance starts at Trump Highway five to go to the east. This project exactly will lead into the west of that. And my opinion would be that we would change the parking to better accommodate existing width over there. With the parallel parking on the north side and the angle on the south side. In my opinion, that would be a little bit less confusing to new people that visit Arlington. So that's my request to the council is that we would, as a council, consider passing a parking resolution that would change.
Right. And we plan to put those resolutions, I wanted to put it on for discussion this evening. The resolutions are prepared, but we will put them on the May eighteenth council agenda.
Now, if the council votes against that, knowing we have a block, I could approach the state for a parking variance, like the east side. There is no guarantee that the state will accept the variance and we'd be back as number one. The state would probably indicate that if you perform with the variance, that the city would take all liability. If there's an accident, if somebody has issue or something because of this non-standard parking style. The variance committee consists of state aided engineers from Mid-Ad, a couple of county engineers. And I have to get up there and feed our cases, why we can't rebuild the street, they need the current standards. That would be their first question to me, which we have to redo part of the sidewalk, redo some of the curb and gutter. And possibly some of the store and sewer system. So that's what, that would involve actually go ahead and rebuild it according to the standards. Well, they would move part of it from Hiller. And they need part of the front yard and most of it. And I would almost, at, at that point in time, we would almost have to look at the parking lot area by the dentist's office because you want to build. The variance would have to go across the entire block. We wouldn't be able to build one part of the block to one standard and the other part to the other standard. So that's kind of the variance route for rebuilding the street or passing the resolution to change the parking. Kind of have to be on. Other questions?
Oh, Tim, I have one question.
Yep, go ahead.
So you're saying if you got a variance, you would have to make the road bigger?
No, if we can get a variance from the state, we could possibly leave it the way it is. But i- if I had to actually apply for variance, I'd say we have a ten percent chance of actually getting it.
Right. And I think part of what Rob's frustration was is why this wasn't brought up to him, I guess, sooner? And why there wasn't even the talk of a variance until, you know, now you have to have this done now. You know, that maybe if it wasn't an option, at least we would have known that.
Well, variance is an option. I, I just don't recommend it because I, the variance does take about six months to get. That's the first thing. We couldn't delay the project. That's not that big a deal. I don't think we're going to be successful in the variance, like in any case. And then the city is going to have to take, take on the liability or the risk of constructing a non-standard parking area.
Just to clarify, this, this issue is not real sudden. I mean, we knew just within last, it is. We didn't have it until what, a month ago, as far as you're approaching the.
Right. It is really construction. We're talking about construction for next year.
Next year.
So I mean, if the council wants to wait a month, discuss it for.
You have questions for, as long as we have him here, now is your chance.
I, I don't know, I, I'm driven through it. Look at it to me, the change makes sense. I, I know it's probably not, it's going to be some folks that have been like it because they're impacted. But it's a narrow street. The spot right now, we're vehicle parked diagonally. You gotta get into the next lane or post it.
I think the big change came when the dental office changed hands and now instead of a local dentist walking to work in the morning and some of his employees. You have four or five people that are driving. And of course, they need to place the parking. The parking lot itself by the dental office is pretty small. It's suitable for patients, but not for the employees also.
And, and Rob is right. You probably will lose about two or three spots for parking if you do that switch. However, to the west, there is quite a bit of parking on North South Street. And I went in several aerial roads over the years and most of the time it's not filled up.
Additional questions? All right. Well, thanks, Tim, for listening with us. We will continue with, continue progressing with it.
Would council like the resolutions on the eighteenth agenda?
Resolutions on eighteen agenda, is that, okay? Laura, resolutions, roses, roses. Okay?
Okay. Thanks, Tim.
Okay, item number eleven, approved denied city environment, approved nineteen ERA utility service payment agreement.
There was one change to this that councilmember Gilman pointed out, and I believe Ross was updating this, correct, Attorney Anderson?
Yes. And I emailed an updated version.
I had a meeting before this one, two meetings before this one, so I have not had a chance to look at my email.
There was only just a very slight change, as councilperson Gilman had suggested. We were referring in this policy to the governor's edict and she had corrected what he's been calling it. I had it under a different name, so that has been changed.
Do you just want to get, what does the agreement deal with?
Do you remember that we talked about this? We talked about this about a month ago. The state had asked us to consider waiving late fee man, late payment, late fees for payments due to COVID nineteen. If they can't make their payments and allow them to make payment plans, which is what this has put together. One thing that council can decide on, what type of interest rate would you like to charge them if they set up a payment plan for COVID nineteen?
So this is sixty days. Is it a two-month window that they're able to delay the payments?
To get back on track, correct? And then they'll have one year to get caught up, a twelve-month period to get caught up.
And during that twelve-month period, that is when the interest would be charged?
Correct. And right now, for people who set up payment plans, it's ten percent of the current balance. Would we like it the same for COVID nineteen? Would you like a less amount? Is ten percent too high?
I personally know that I, I mean, if we're going to do something to allow, you know, allow hardship, right?
So are you recommending zero percent interest?
I mean, if somebody comes to me and says, hey, guys, I would like to sign up for this. And it's sixty days, it's not like it's, I don't know, we're talking like two months and then now a year to pay back that two months' bill. While they're free, they still need to make payment for, for that month, so we're only talking two months. I, I probably have a big chart insurance about for two months.
We can say zero percent, yeah. That can be an option.
If they have a hardship, we don't do.
At the end of twelve months, so if they would not be.
Well, then it would go back to our regular ten percent on the balance due. This is just specifically for COVID. This isn't changing our current one. Laura, I heard you chime in.
No, I was just going to agree with Joe that if this is something to help people get back on track, then zero percent interest makes a lot of sense.
Is that the only thing that needs to be decided?
That's the only thing that needed to be decided on it was that interest rate and then approve it.
When anyone makes the motion to approve that, I will make the motion to approve COVID nineteen utility service payment agreement with zero percent interest.
I'll second.
Laura? Sure.
Motion by councilmember Hattleside, second by councilmember Gilman to approve the COVID nineteen ERA utility services payment agreement with an interest rate of zero percent. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, moving into new business. Where did we put that period?
At the end.
Yeah, all right. Item twelve, approved denied sack and whack waiver for Miller Homes Construction, two twenty-four Friendsville Drive.
Miller Homes is constructing a new home valued at two hundred and twenty thousand at two twenty-four Friendsville Drive, and they are asking for the whack and sack waiver. Yes.
Oh, produce a motion to approve, uh, just still those.
Forty-eight twenty-five.
Motion by councilmember Morgan, second by councilmember Hattleside, to approve the wagon sack waiver for Miller Homes for construction of a resident in a home at two twenty-four Friendsville Drive. The only thing I had is there some, once the construction is done, do we have to bring it's okay for proof as to what the value or do we check the tax statement?
We can check that by what it sells by.
What it sells by, all right. So that is monitored somewhere.
Do we know, um, what was it, we'll build, please start.
I think it's closer to eight, seven or eight. It is working.
I don't think it can go over under two twenty.
Okay, any other questions on that? Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those know? Motion carry. Item thirteen, prove denied twenty-five hundred dollar bid from American Environmental, all C to televise Pond and County Road thirty-four.
Lee Ort LaFuna come up for this too. Lee did do the work to reach out to the two companies to televise. Lee did do the work to reach out to the two companies to televise Lynch Pond and County Road thirty-four, so that before they do the mill and overlay, we know what's under there.
And with the project going, Lynch Pond, they did their work in there. Conversations.
Mm hmm. We had this discussion a few months ago about television Lynch Pond, when we approved that four thousand dollar bill.
So they'll be televising the inward pipe and then the.
The outlet, that's the one.
Got it.
That's the one we had the concern about.
So this twenty-five hundred dollar quote is for the road where the mill and overlay and.
It's for both. Mm hmm.
So nine way five to the seven and seven. And from there to the west, that's all.
Mm hmm.
We want to know the condition of sewer pipe that's down. There is something that's critical of using the boundary.
Correct.
This was already.
This was not.
This was not approved.
The bid is here.
Mm hmm.
Wait.
Motion by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Hattles to approve the. Bid of American Environmental LLC to televise Lynch Pond and County Road two, or thirty-four at a cost of twenty-five hundred dollars. Any further discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carry. Thanks, Lee. Then lastly, in under item number. Thirteen, we're gonna talk about, on your, on your business, we're gonna talk about the parade. And you've heard the proposal that was given to us, and we're looking for cooperated cooperation by the state. For them to put on the graduation parade, so to speak. It might involve, it will likely involve, likely involve police departments. At various intersections and such.
I think it's great that the group is trying to do something for seniors.
Absolutely.
Yep.
It's been so tough. And then we can. They saw where you're going, like even that six foot distance between, between everyone, or the, you know, they have other pieces of safety. Or whatever we can do.
Are you gonna need any Americans to put up on these sides? Not that I'm against it, just wanting to straight partner to have to set up an affair and sign a policy.
Okay.
And we do, you know the date, you don't know the date exactly? Oh, there's a thirty first.
The date provided doesn't rain.
Sure.
And then what, possibly use the file to go, if, if they go ahead, I mean, there's lots against them, but if they go ahead with some kind of commencement thing outside, then if it rains on that Sunday, then it's seven o'clock Monday. The rain on that Monday, it's seven o'clock.
Okay.
So basically, just, just trying to give you whether it's a sunny Sunday or rainy day, that we have one thing, uh, who would then move to the following.
Mr. Anderson, Mr. Anderson, you talked with them today, and they also said that once they get the direction from MBE, then they'll be able to release more information than actually tie planning which path they're going in, but will only be virtual. Or if there's something, you know, that they can hold out at the mall deal. So it'd be feelably bad that there's somebody unknown right now. But the date, we are keeping what the original commencement date, you know, and it's not that.
And then if we begin on the eighteen, we'll be able to work with the vaults. And that gives us time to, to, what their decision about, we, we, we can try to submit to paper and see if we get it published out that week. And then the models will be added to reason, I think.
Mm hmm.
Of where the lands are, so we can, so we can make sure that the communities of all of those things, we can kind of do that. But none of that can happen, I was telling. Kind of, kind of, we just, we're involved with, with the schools, all right, sort of, sort of, that could all kind of come together.
And I know questions will raise also. You know, what about Green Isle, will they, you know, neglect it, what about Bealer, you know, well, that's how we neglect it. We did talk about the idea of having a great beach town, but we said, you know what? We prefer to have it just in Arlington, that's where the high school is. I mean, that, that's the primary location. So, you know, we kind of got feedback from, from, right, other parents who haven't been involved in. And the general consensus really was to keep it here and in Arlington. Right, if, if we could, so that's why we wanted to bring that to you guys, see if, you know, we can get your blessing, and then we did. I know, start asking like the sheriff's office, Bealer Fire Department in Green Isle, and then see if, if, you know, most people will be there.
Mm hmm.
Good. Right, any other comments? Questions? A motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the parade and help them with. Police. Traffic control and helping their barricades, whatever they need.
Yes.
Motion by Councilmember Hattles, second by Councilmember Batcher to approve the. Parade for the twenty twenty graduates at City East, and give them any support they can from the city departments. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carry.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Item fourteen, approved denied repair of the city payload, amount six thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars to keep its repair in Arlington.
There was a copy of the picture of what happens with the payloader. Joe, Councilmember Morgan asked some questions today, which went back and forth with Kirby to find out what happened. He was turning over some compost when this broke off. We're kind of need to fix it. The city needs the payloader back up and working. So we have two quotes, one from Peeps, one from Titan.
So, yeah, so the progress were, did we have, we like already ordered that?
Yes. Yes, it had already been ordered. We were gonna have Peeps, he was gonna have Peeps fix it. I said we have to have, and then it turned out to be more than what we originally thought. I said we have to have two quotes to fix this, because it's a high dollar amount. We need to have two quotes to get this fixed.
One question I ask, is, do they have experience repairing this type of damage like Titan machinery does?
I understand that Peeps is who Kirby normally uses to repair things.
My only concern is for the difference, are we gonna get it repaired correctly? I mean, if this is the first one he's ever worked on.
Does anybody know enough?
Yeah, I have a little concern with Chief's panel. I don't know his capability.
Has anyone been familiar with their work?
I'm not. I know.
Is the payloader there, or is he doing?
The payloader is there, because that's what it was originally brought, correct?
Brought to Peeps.
Mm hmm.
So we would have, we'd have to pay additional falling into.
The city's, correct.
The city's.
So Peeps picked it up. If he drove.
I think he drove it over there, yeah.
Yep.
And the bid in Titan is, that's not to pick it up, bring it back?
No.
Only the repair or?
That's the repair. Correct.
I don't think we're, I don't think we're in right.
They'd probably haul it down. Mm hmm.
I just did some.
No.
So the bid from Titan was, did I read that, and I don't have it in front of me, but now, did I read that the part was ordered, that large part that?
It was already ordered, correct.
Titan, or from?
It had already been ordered through Peeps, because Peeps was going to do it.
Okay, okay, yes.
And then it turned out to be a little more involved than we thought.
So we're almost stuck going there, we own the part. Or the parts ours.
The parts ours, yeah.
Probably not that's what you.
No.
That is a huge casting.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's clean, right?
Yeah.
So I mean, if the bushing was around, it's, you know, responsible.
Isn't Edward Kirby had suggested that, mentioned the, that other bushings were also.
Yeah.
Mm hmm.
That's my concern, the Titan probably would know that for sure, and that might be why that is a bit higher versus Peeps. I don't know, I can only guess.
The talks about bushings and that's.
Peeps as well.
Now, you have an opinion. If we wanted all of these to tell you, you're gonna roll away if that's gonna be a thousand bucks. And then if we get over there, it's coming back. I just want to make sure it's things correctly.
Hey, Amy.
Laura, yeah.
I, I'm, the, the audio is not terrific, so I'm gonna ask. I thought I heard you say that the job was a little more detailed than what you expected. When the parts were ordered, correct?
Correct, they originally just ordered the parts, they were going to, Peeps is gonna replace it, Kirby had estimated a few thousand dollars, they were going to fix it. And then it was brought in, and that's when we found out it was gonna cost us more.
Okay, so does that mean that additional parts may need to be ordered, which is going to increase this amount? Or are the parts that were ordered the only parts that are anticipated that will be needed?
The rest of it should be on this quote, if I'm looking at it correctly.
Yeah, my take on.
Yeah, the.
The twenty-six hundred eighty-two dollars was for the light can, and then.
Correct.
And then there would have been labor associated with installing it, I'm guessing when he took it out, and the worst is the bushing, fence was shot, was sealed, that's where all was always the fault, it's her.
Came in.
Department number.
Correct.
I mean, I need to read some, just to keep that piece and having to look at prices a little bit under, and they are pouring to it, plus the installers, so.
And it's a local business.
I'd like them to make motion to approve repairs to the safe payloader of six thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars.
Motion by Councilmember Batcher, second by Councilmember Morgan to approve the repair of the safe payloader. By Peeps repair at a cost of six thousand seven hundred twenty-nine dollars. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close, no? Motion carry. Item fifteen, discussion on water treatment plant, client, this was requested by Councilmember Batcher and added Kurt Reed's to school. Mr. Reed.
Acoustics, it's too bad. You're good right there.
Oh, I'm surprised, too, it's echo.
Yeah, it's a little echo, yeah, there.
Yeah, it's a little bit bad. I was called by Councilmember Batcher, she had a lot of questions about the discussion. For some of you that don't know me, I've been a resident of the city for six to two years, I did a part of this water street one on my. Forty-first year of doing from operations of water, waste water facilities, the lowest grade up to the highest grade in the whole place I've been so far. Did a lot of industrial wastewater transportation, I've been through a lot of plant operations, many different years. And with my company that I have, I actually been taught since the fourth generation, very first, like, scared of training with the main criteria. My main job is to train and mentor people, I've done tons of my jobs, to work myself on top of my community, and they need help to figure out creating terrible long time, three years, three or four years. And if I've done my job, I'm going. Some people will say that student, that's your work. Because mentoring, training. When Councilmember Batcher called me, she had a lot of questions about the, some of the discussion you guys had with the water treatment facility. And I think one, one of the things that she heard or assumed it was said was that the water treatment facility has gotten screwed, useful, I, that's not at all true. And I, I told somebody here to say that water treatment facility is just like tires. We face things that we replace tires, we replace doors, and we replace brakes, and so on, the water facilities, same, in fact, I know this last summer, someone did correct, the person pops out. And there's pipings that replace the computer skating system that's been upgraded, I think, once, probably about ten long years ago. Yeah, when it was put in the engine. So, does the water facility need some work yet? It's, it's. Piping is smart, I haven't been in there for quite a while. Piping is more likely to get the bad, probably valves that are, that are distinct. Filter itself, sometimes they'll take on the after site, re-sands and media base, and inspect the under bases, that holds that whole set of media base in the filter, and we'll check all that out. Um, sorry, no, so who, who does the inspection? Normally, a project of this size, it's gonna be handled by the engineering firm, and what they'll probably do is they'll probably contract with the top, or running director of filtering companies. And generally, what they'll do is a lot of the general contract, the general contract, let out some specialty contracts, and the engineer will have to lay out, it's really not gonna be an inspection, it's gonna really be hard, I would very close, they're gonna come in the back trucks. They're gonna start the media out when they get down to the fourth grade, then the engineer will have to inspect it there, probably somebody from the top or one of the other companies, and they'll inspect it really strong. So I had a lot of questions, I think, that you're, I've raised, so when I entered tour. What I took away from it was that our, that our media, we had to visit, you know, media servicing, and then we also had a few other items within the facility. So, when I heard the, or initially, I think, when I read it, it seemed as though we needed to replace it. Yeah, it's really, it's really the upholstery and the tires and everything. Yeah, so, so that was my big way that when I left, when I left the tour, it was that we needed to do. Some work to the infrastructure that, like, supposedly, so media, there's heaters that are, that are old and need to be replaced, or some other, across some environment. Chemical feed pumps, chemical feed tanks, line spells, you know, and then, and when, when it comes to that point, the city's gonna have to. Of course, relying on the service, which are gonna have to have some, some distinct problems laid out, because we can put in the top of line skating system. We can put in a skating system upgrade for two thousand, we can put in top of like skating system for fifty thousand. Or that thing's got the brains, the monitors, doors, which put in automatic, either air operator belts or light control belts, the computer runs everything. Or you can put it in where the operator comes in there and they work the bells, when it's trying to backwash, and then wash the backwash water, and when it's done, they move the next cell, so it's whether you're fully automated or whether you, you keep it manual operation. And these days, there's those kind of facilities put in, fully automated, there's, there's a little much. Right, yeah, I think where that, so, my take leaving was that. A few thousand dollars was gonna get it, gonna get the engineering kind of going on, you know, what is, what is necessary. So looking at the physical facility, preparing, and now, obviously, we would be able to have some input on, on what we want to have in the facility. Yeah, and then the defense fund, we're kind of looking for funding twice. Because, of course, there's PFA fund, public financing firm, which is real interest, so there's, there's USDA real belt, and more, it's low interest, plus, well, based on the income levels, you get it, there's a grant. Either one of them orders to, to. Qualify for, you have to go up more, just to set the feasibility, since there's a full facilities plan, I see this full facilities plan, preliminary engineering plans, go from anywhere from forty grand to two hundred grand. Since there's a full facilities plan, I've seen this full facilities plan, preliminary engineering plans, open anywhere from forty grand to two hundred grand. So once you get your feet in, you get your feet out, your knees are all the way to Pfizer, and then just a rehab of a facility like this size. I don't think it's gone through any, but I bet they're talking a minimum of, uh, minimum order of maybe as much as a half million just for a simple rehab.
Rather than the number of the night or, you know, is, whether they're happy or whether they're.
And then they start talking about line software facility. And one of the reasons they want to put in, considering line software, is because on the town, they actually waste markets, so you're going with your environment. They eat that easy, it's talking about salts and, and chlorates and, and sodium. And typically, that comes from water sources. So one way to do it is try to do it on the drinking water side, try and get those, the cannons up there. Been to two training seminars and talked to two operators, so that's, where both of us had water softeners, are used to, instead of thirty-three grain water harness, we're used to one grain water harness, what, that's, when it's getting reverse osmosis, so already, uh, line software, just so you can have water harness that's still between five and eight grains of harness. So people are used to what we got now, but they're going to want to use the soft.
Yeah, and I don't think the consensus was to do.
The line.
At this time on the secondary side, again, that really adds up.
Yes, I, um, there was a lot of question about that because, you know, those are big numbers.
Those are big numbers.
Not knowing whether or not it's actually going to happen, right? CA doesn't have. No, and that's just it. The MBCA is, I've been, you know, with the MBCA for about forty, forty-one years, and they always come up with these, whether it's molecules, or whether it's nitrates, or whether it's nitrates, or whether it's sodas and chlorates, they come up with all these panelists. They're going to hit it hard, and then they work into it because they give communities an opportunity to financially work in, but people afford it. And I'm sure you guys are all aware of what the electric rates have done to our bills and what the scrubs are a piece of done to our, to our utility bills. So my wife and I, ourselves in our home, we use about twenty-five hundred to three thousand gallons a month. And it's got my bill in the mail here, and my sewer bill is forty-eight dollars, and my water is twenty-four. We start moving into the big line software facility or our own facility, we can probably be looking at the same as we're paying on sewer. If not, then again, more on the water side, per se, you've got three to four hundred dollar utility bills, so. I guess, all that I, all that I ask, and I think when I talk to Michelle, is, is, um, when, when I'm sat in the council, I always had a, uh, thought, and that was, and excuse me, was never trust a consultant. And I'm in Oz. That's, that's the way I deal with my customers. Never, never trust a consultant. He does live in the community, but it's right outside the community, but most of the, all the other consultants do that. And what I mean by that is, the council's job is to ask questions, ask questions, ask questions. Know that question, and ask more questions until you're satisfied with the answers you got. You know, I can go into a community, I, I mean myself, not, um, so I don't go in here and get promised early, and I don't charge to wear away. I mean, living that. And so, I don't live.
Your professional opinion, so we've got a twenty-year-old, twenty-three-year-old, twenty-three-year-old system in manufacture, saying twenty years something. Um, you know, I, I had some questions as well, as, you know, obviously, the media's rated on water flow. Where we, where we maximizing water flow follows, went into my thought process, you know, trying to make a split, you know, pretty quick decision on important topics, so.
Well, they designed it based on, based on population, but so the first thing that's going to throw off the facility out of, out of its capabilities is the population law. Well, our population is really for the sake, we love them now, and we keep it on. So the next thing that brings it into its, into its age is civil age, the media, the way it handles that.
To break you down.
Yeah, so as the crew, you know, and figure out how much it's passing through. And, and for, for people's services, that, this isn't, this isn't, uh, uh, normal payments, you know, if, uh, they would be coming to the city with five, ten, fifteen thousand dollar capital expenditures, pumps, valves, piping, and chemical feed systems, and then that doesn't include media change outs. And certain things are considered recurring capital items, thirty-three years, or thirty-five, or it's every eight, ten. But there are certain things that are considered capital items that pop up on these fifteen to eighteen, twenty, twenty-two year time tables. And that's where the urban cities have right now.
But the actual media.
Yep.
Your consensus on that.
Yep.
Media.
Yep. What happens is, if, uh, your simple journey, the plug's up, starts following. And as it follows, the water goes through in different patterns, and it gets buried in the water, takes its way, and it doesn't, doesn't start building real good. Plus, the re-sand, you can recharge it, you can extract the molecules in the re-sand, you can re-magnetize it, for a simple term, by using your cash.
Yeah, that's a simple, you know.
And you can, that purple stuff, you can recharge, but you can only do that to a cer- certain extent also. So when I, when I talk to, uh, Lee's, Lee's boss, Greg Stang, second director, and him and I both agreed with what we just talked about. It helps plenty potentially electronics and computer upgrade on the skating system. And it's just how, how much you want to spend. Yeah, so when I talk, when I walk away, that's, that's what, that's what I was saying, okay, yeah, let's, let's, uh, you know, double brand, let's see what, let's see what happens.
And something else Kurt and I had talked about, we talked about getting money if we do move forward and need a feasibility study from an engineer on our water treatment plan, looking for grants to have that done. I talked to Bolted and Ming, they said forty, fifty thousand to do that feasibility study. Uh, not only the USDA, but Compere does feasibility studies.
Yeah, they'll put grants for together, put it together, I think, preliminary engineering.
See what we need to do.
Preliminary engineering plan sounds like preliminary, but the preliminary engineering plans are almost so detailed that they're sixty to seventy-five percent of the way through the action engineering process. That's why I think it's possible to say, real belt, some of these other companies, like, we'll put grass in there, integral belt, thirty-six thousand dollars. And I don't know what the qualifications is, if that thirty-six thousand is based on a hundred thousand dollar request, then thirty-six thousand is just going value, it's all in, on the official.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm, I'm not trying to speak for you, if you have some other questions that we talked about.
Well, we asked a lot, and we touched on pretty much everything we talked about. I guess it was just for me, you reciting, and having everybody on the council know what's going on, because it comes along very well. We tried to articulate what you told me, what the phone we saw.
And I, I tried, I always tell people, you know, I've been working a lot of time, I've worked a lot of engineers, I stand up, I'll take on any engineering firm, but I do it from a dumb, stupid operator standpoint. I've done it for forty-one years, so I've got my fingers smashed, and I've got my toes hurt, so I, so, so if I can do it from an operator standpoint, I can, I can particularly, you guys see, understand that, that's most important. So, yeah, good questions in the future, feel free to call me. But if they're talking about rehabbing, rehabbing the filter at this point, I, I totally, totally agree with it. One thing, start talking about, of course, your small sisters, line software, when you said six hundred million dollars.
Well, then, I mean, that, that was, they're presenting.
Go ahead.
So there you go.
I can turn water for you, but I, I.
My, anything I can do on it, it's like, oh, God.
The, uh, the line softly, then we are all, um, ball dropping, this is the fifth time I've heard this, this middle of that summer, engineers have got this eight, little, or they drilled this line soft and fall and see how many cities catch it. So, and you gotta, you gotta walk into it. You, you gotta do what you can for it.
Right.
Now, the state is saying, we want it done, and we want it done now, and they put it in, and it sends, it sends a break. That's, that's a, that's a tricky mechanism, which you know you have to do it as well.
Well, they got to have time to get, get them as well.
And I've never, never seen that MBCA that we can see, put in a, a, uh, contaminant removal permit without allowing the cities a full permit cycle to accept it, observe it, analyze their financial condition, and go into a, into a, uh, feasibility study in an engineering plan, which sometimes it'll go on five, eight, ten years. Have you got any other questions?
Questions with Kurt?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very, very interesting. All right, uh, Lee, you want to come back up? Discussion on lift station. That's the least.
Well, three years ago, we were looking ahead to the future, came the budget, uh, Mr. Eric Purse of Money, already replaced the controls. They've got a school of a station, um, there's a lot of sub panels thrown on the board, all the things that you want to hear. And at that time, we had engineering houses, what, how much we could put away in peer-to-peer. So two years went by, we just went down Estman, and we came back. We're going to upgrade the pumps. We're currently fifteen pumps, and maybe we can study if a particular, whatever, well, maybe we can upgrade that old thing to twenty pumps. And, 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 uh, and then, then, we're just, we're seven, seven. Just wanted to bring it up, as a discussion on, in the top. Um, we helped out with the nineteen-eighteen year, um, there's a twenty first pump, it has additional one pump running a hundred gallons. So there's a lot of, you know. Were you able to tour all the council members, to the pumps and that?
Mm-mm.
Not totally bringing them.
Mm-hmm.
So the flow, actually, was, did anybody go to the other?
It was just Joe and I, that, it was just the two of us that looked at it.
And it might, I, I work about it, because I think it goes a long way through, uh,
Mm-hmm.
It was, what was it, like, Wednesday or something, around three o'clock, uh, the flow, like, going through that sanitary area, and the line was, I guess, in my opinion, I'm not an expert on the pipe side, to be able to judge the flow, but it was quite a bit of flow. Which leads me to believe that, uh, either, we've got some water coming in, other than just, uh, you know, a few of our residents in that area flushing, and, and washing, you know, laundry. Obviously, snow has just melted, um, maybe it's cell pumps, maybe it's tile, I think that was a few things that, that were discussed. But there's, there's a lot of water there. When I, when I look at that, and try to get to a root cause, what's causing some flooding, you know, residents in our community are getting flooded basements now. Um, sometime, that's kind of speaking as to like, you know, to get to the root cause, and start focusing, you know, upwards, upstream, and figure out where this water is coming from. Um, bigger pumps, and, you know, it's not solving the root cause, but it certainly helps when the water comes, right? And you can put more away.
Here's the age I'm doing with, with the channels.
Yeah.
Again, this is all, all new panel controls on it, uh, new pumps.
Uh, both of them.
New monitors coming up. There's a new, uh, switch for your, you know, you have to check.
And money was supposed to have been put away for this, as Lee mentioned, but it has not been set aside. The money was not set aside for this lift station. It was talked about, but not set aside. So I think that council has some big decisions to make to talk strategic planning, what is really important to the city? What do you want to set money aside for? Is this important to the flooding in the basements? Is it something you wanted to address? Uh, talking to Lisa today, it looks like we have money set aside for the library. There's money set aside for the library and probably sidewalks, money that had been set aside for sidewalks. And that's all she could think of.
So the money that was set aside for sidewalks, so that you might still look after those, so we'd store public health initiative, right? Because that money is coming from hospital.
And that's something, right, that is a policy that was put together by a different council. That is something that this council could revisit that policy, what you'd like to use that hospital lease money on.
Yeah, I think, uh, one thing, you know, one thing that could help is.
Strategic planning.
Priority ranking of, of life, so those are the three things that I talked about. You, you get it in the system, and you write it, and you call to it. So, if your bank account's got just a million dollars, and you've got these things to do, I can't imagine, you know, flooding basements not being at the top of our list.
Especially if your basement's flooded, though.
Well, I mean, I've, you know, I've talked to so many, so many times. And, and again, not that I, I, I don't feel that, oh, it's going to solve the problem, but it is, it is a solution to help. While we're group, um.
The other I and I.
And again, if you go look at the water flowing through there, it's, it's quite a bit of water, and it's never flowed out.
No payloaders, another thing that's been thrown out there for that capital improvement plan that never ended up budgeted for though either, that's a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We need to prioritize, like, that's why that's on the agenda, that ranking system. We need to do that, and we need to talk about what are all our projects, and let's rank them.
Is it twenty percent, ten percent?
It's a big deal. It's a big deal.
That's a lot of water. And it's doing something.
You don't feel so much, you know, what, you know, we're.
Well, you put the biggest pump in the world there, but.
We're right underneath that, that.
Mm-hmm.
Turning, they got, like, the security button, it's a first part, and we'll have.
And go.
This is on for discussion. Council can start thinking about, is this something, is something you want to think about? They offered to give us, you can see on the bottom of the quote there, terms that we could pay part of it.
We had a budget of fifty thousand dollars a year. And, and then, at the end of the year, we, this is the next three weeks, and another additional fifty thousand dollars. So, we're at the one hundred thousand, that's where it's at. So, then we talk, there's no interest on this, you know. And then, then, you can, you can.
I feel like I brought on a lemon, kind of. The money's supposed to be set aside, and then you owe it to find out what the heck happened to the money, and, and.
Guessing it went into a different part of the budget.
Okay.
So, you said that money was set aside, is the council supposed to set aside money, or is it set aside?
The city was supposed to set aside that money.
So.
And it was supposed to carry over every year, like the library.
So this isn't like a brand new topic that's come up, you know, it's been on our, and brought up over and over and over again.
Another.
A line item, and then on over, and, um, you know, you talk about line item state, and it followed, and that has not happened.
No, it has not.
So.
The library did.
And we just, just, uh, I mean, if that.
The library did.
So.
With these things, yeah.
Right. And, and like you said, I mean, it isn't trying, trying, leaving some of the water that's going to the basements. That's a high value, you know, paper holders of hat card, or two holder, that was kind of sprung on us, and then on the CIP, we're very one, we need one a year in advance, right? So, planning hadn't been done prior to.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and so that, that's part of it, right? This is kind of getting, um, I mean, we have a list station a little bit, but the. This is kind of getting on, having the lift station a little bit, what the whole budget process has to, and CIP, that's the general.
There's a table.
Correct.
There's so many other things. There's so many other things. And there's one there. I mean, that's the thing, it has been in it. And, and the assumption, well, it's not even assumption, I mean, we, it was to be for these things, the money and the CIP.
Our line.
So that's where a lot of my frustration, I think, over the last year and a half, two years, has come from.
I know how many times you've brought that.
So yeah, getting back on track, making sure the money's going where it needs to go, absolutely.
Just so you.
Only a moment past.
There was a theory of Michelle was reading, well, we have a big pot of money, it's there. Well, how do you budget the things? You don't know what you said that. But like Michelle said, we need it to adapt, change.
Well, I was under the impression that it's fixed, but then I was told last year that, no, that money in the CIP is going to get dumped back into the general fund if it's not used. Well, that's why I signed up for it. That was not.
That's what happened.
But that's what, and, and we just found it itself, that's what happened.
So can we introduce a motion to any capital money set aside for projects specifically allocated for those and not go to a general fund at the end of the year? I mean, if we make a commitment to do something, then you should do it. Boy, that's, that's.
That, you know, it's.
That's that one. No, I'm getting asked to wait, look in the CIP, wait until in five years, we need a, a squad car, it's fifty thousand dollars, and we're saving ten thousand dollars a year, we have to know after a year, it's eighty, seventy thousand, and that would be possible. But, but.
I, I don't know how, why.
No, I want to introduce the motion to make that. Oh, I don't.
I got butts.
Are we, I, I don't want to talk about this in two years from now, of how we thought we set money aside, it wasn't there. And what I mean, we owe it to someone, I mean, yeah, it's, if we're planning for something, if something else comes up, and that's where this project ranking comes in, so valuable, because when somebody comes in, sits down, says, I want money, we put it in there and we write it.
Yep.
And if it doesn't beat out something else, we don't do it. That's economics, that's your own finances, that's the world, you know, like. And it takes the emotion out of it. So somebody sits down, says, I need a hundred thousand for this money, and we have to have it, it's so important and everything else. It's hard to say no. You put it in there and you write it, and you're honest with it, and it makes it easy.
I don't know.
I know there's a document in there, but I'm.
I think we're on to item seventeen. Lee, I think you're done.
I don't know. Yes.
Well, permission, direction.
Right, this is not, this is, they're not, they're not voting on this tonight. They, we'd have to have two quotes here. Is, we're looking for direction from the council. Is that what you'd like to do, move forward with this? Do you just want to?
I think we need to write it, and I think we need to move fast on a system that allows us to make good sound decisions of what's important to the community.
That's our capital improvement.
That's the next thing. They go together.
I mean, I guess for me, I guess, before we make a decision, I think.
Can see how this, this ranks with everything.
Lee, do you remember, did they give us a timeframe on when we'd have to make a decision about this? Okay.
So is a consensus to just hold off on the decision on this at this point?
Well, it doesn't necessarily need to be tabled because it was just discussion. It's not something to table on. I don't know that we'll be ready by the eighteen, will we?
Well, with the second call, third.
No, we can get a call, yeah, I was gonna say, I have two calls, one third.
But it's only the six thirty days we're not to act on, and play this case card.
Who might give us different numbers towards?
With the, I, I think we need to spearhead this, right? People's basements are flooding, and the beer that happens, and folks can't necessarily, or afraid to leave their home because if it rains, they, you know, might damage their recent remodel. I'm not personally, this, but I can feel for them. And I don't, I, I, again, I don't think this is the answer, complete answer. I think it's a part of, this is just a return plan to upgrade the observation because there is some being on. Yeah. It's more, it's more of that than the prostitute. We're just wanting to do that. Yeah, the way it's there, sitting on wood structure with overhang on it, the wood is probably. Oh, the one's broken off. So they're already. So since I've seen one, since we're on the topic, I mean, upstream engine, is there something we can put in place right now that has people's services going upstream and, you know, checking flow and trying to come back to us with some information for the next council? To say, okay, this is what we believe is going on, or.
I think we discussed that quite thoroughly last, when you were talking about fair girls.
But that's only part of it, right? Because it's supposed to be capped right now, when I was looking at this pipe, and we still got, you know, a good amount of water coming in. So where is that water coming from? So those plugs are in, some pumps are. That, and there could be.
Cracks in the pipe.
When you say priority, next road traffic, that's just, that is, that is, going up, hammer out, there goes, storm lines are way on the surface, so it's certainly on the surface. But this is, it's a bad storm. I know. Like, we don't know if there's, tell, tell ways, there could be offsets in the drains, and then you could, stormwater, and tapes, and it could slip into there. There could be lessons. Well, I was wondering, could we have you crack it and just take the lids off and do an observation on the water, or if all of a sudden it stops right here, you know, it's from this point to this point, where we believe this is coming in and how maybe there's some, what do you call it, guest events or what, vicinity for where the source is coming from. Because it wasn't raining, right? Snow had just melted, so there's water in the ground. Maybe it's a sun, maybe it's something else, but that certainly, if it was a sun, or it was something else tied into it, when it rains heavily, you know, all that water potentially would be coming in, then the pumps can't keep up.
Okay, let's wrap up item sixteen with a decision. Go out for another quote or?
It doesn't hurt him to get another quote.
Yeah, I don't know what it's gonna.
It's not gonna hurt to get another quote, we have better ideas.
That we know.
Then we know we're a budgeting actor.
The quote's gonna hurt.
Yep.
All right, let's do, let's get that quote down, another quote, and it'll be brought up at whenever that's in, I suppose, with the next meeting or meeting in June.
A meeting in June.
First meeting in June.
Thank you.
Thanks, Lee. Item seventeen, discussion on capital improvement plan, ranking system. I think we've touched on that.
We did touch on that. There's also something council member Morgan reached out to me, and we, we did briefly talk about it, we texted a little bit about a ranking system, and I am asking council if it would be okay for just council member Morgan and I to talk about this rather than bringing it to a finance committee meeting. I think council member Morgan has the experience with it, and he might be the best one to help put together the ranking system. If he is open to that.
Sure.
That way we can keep moving forward on that.
Well, and if there's concepts or ideas that, you know, other members have as far as, you know, a lot of things, my world is about production and safety, so there's, the verbage we use to, you know, prioritize things are safety, like, for floodings, the basements, you know, you have to call it something else, immediate, you know, risk or hazard.
And there is language in our policy already that was included in the packet, but it doesn't provide a true scoring system for ranking these. It's just if it's a mandated project, that was, A, something that, if they meet the following criteria, but we don't have a true ranking system.
So are you, are you looking for yourself and council member Morgan to come up with a ranking system, is that what you're asking?
That's what we're asking for this, not to.
But come up with a system.
Come up with the system for ranking.
And then, yeah, and then part of that would be, how would we, what it, what I'm used to is, is a group, we shout, and we write it.
I think a work session of the whole council would have to rank the items, once we have the system.
That way, or should everybody kind of does their own, and it's average, sound, and then that's how you tell.
Yeah, the piece that I wanted to clarify on was, are you coming up with a plan or anything? So, okay, as it's presented, that's why I asked that question. So you clarified that, so I think I'm.
Okay.
Rick. Might as well use the experience that we have.
Right, before we start planning for the next budget, you gotta have something in place.
Well, and that's exactly what the next form is, is looking at the five-year, twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-six, when we start. I'd like to ask.
Just to go back or whatever, typically the departments rank their own projects always seem fit, right? So when you would get your list, or other city administrators would get their list in the past, the city department heads would rank the list of their local facilities or their needs, in order of what they felt. And then, and that's always going to be asked, right? So, but then, you know, sort of talking about projects, right? Like this project that popped up, you know, street projects and stuff, or whatever, too. I think as a group, as a council, we both come together, we were gonna do that Taylor Street project, that was the next on the slate, because we, they knew that it was bad. But then they forgot about Clinton, and that's been bad for fifty years. So why put them on the back further, even though we knew something was going on there? Right, so we prioritize it, try and, and try to bring projects like that. So it, it's working, but I think you like your idea of coming up with, like, solid criteria, is what I see getting from you, right? There's no criteria, I can see totally have it all. So, and I like that.
Should pass a resolution with your capital improvement plan each year, too.
I wouldn't even see it even in the conference, their ranking has, like, that should still come in to.
Needs to be ranked as a whole.
Against other things, so if this department comes in and this is what they want, they may have to agree, and do what they want, it still needs to be ranked against everything.
Correct.
Well, and, I mean, sometimes, I guess our thought or whatever, too, was, if, if certainly things like they need, like we, they know that they're gonna need a partner's experience, and everything, why do we have a line? Because you know you're gonna have, that shouldn't rank, file against something that pops up because they need it.
Close the CIP, it is done.
Yeah, but, you know, like I, I spoke before, we should have a CIP on that is for that department and stays with that department, because you know you're always gonna have capital away for certain things that they, that department needs, right? So.
To standardize, to place cars, you're required to have.
Oh, but that's on our CIP, and not as a line item underneath their budget, as a CIP line item, as their CIP line item should stay fit, see what I'm saying? So there has, it, it needs work, our five-year needs work, model year. The other thing that we do not have in place is the twenty-year, and I would like to see the twenty-year budget also be put into place, things like the waste, the water treatment there. If we wouldn't, if we would have to build it, knew that we have, had a twenty-year life span, we could have been saving.
That should go hand in hand with updating your comp plan.
All these years, and then you said, oh, come on, let's do it.
That should be part of your comp plan. That's something Michael and I have talked about, your comp plan, the city of Arlington's comp plan has to be updated.
Those are things that I would like to see is, like, twenty or a long-range budget, whatever, too, right? Something drops off, something else could pop right back on, you can put things in the mainstream, or whatever.
I think the engineering study that Amy had brought up in class session.
Streets. The streets.
You can, you can encompass your air construction, so my facility, I had one of those ropes. When I took the position, it was, oh, we gotta do this rope, we gotta do this rope. And I'm looking at the ropes that everybody was telling me to do, and we had, we had one to pull, something to pull the rope. So I had a company come in and they did ropes, assessment on it, and that one, like, five to seven years, you know, the rope, and they had so many others. But as a city or a company, whatever it is, you can do that to all of your assets to, to decide what's the, what's the condition of everything, whether that's, you know, roads, whether that's this facility, ambulance, fire truck. So you, you get everything on there, then it kind of allows you to make those decisions.
All right, and city minister Newsom and council member Morgan will work on that. And bring it right back to the council, bring it to the finance committee first, or what is your thought, directly to the council?
My thought was.
I don't think it has, yeah, I would think it would, to the council to, to look at way in, because it's not finances, it's just a.
It's just a ranking system. It's a procedure, correct? We can send that out.
All right, going on to miscellaneous business, are there any council member committee updates?
There's the two additions to yet, remember Jane.
Were there, were there?
I don't know.
Go ahead.
There was the addition of, we had a personnel committee meeting before the council meeting this evening, and one of the recommendations from the personnel committee meeting was to hire Jane Romaker. She has been the administrative assistant, working through the temp agency, and she has reached her six hundred hours, so we would like to offer her a position, a full-time position with the city, seventeen dollars an hour plus benefits. That's why we waited until we got to the six hundred hours. We had visited this about a month ago, had a personnel committee meeting, and she was at three hundred and fifty hours, and then it was two thousand and five hundred dollars. And once we got to six hundred hours, that's when it gets the lowest, at two hundred and fifty dollars.
And cost to the city is, we bet it's the same as.
We need her, we need that bond in there.
She needs to answer the phone.
She does a good job.
She gets along with everybody, everybody gets along.
Yes. That would be step one of what it would have been for Laura Dykoff under that. Correct.
To hire Jane.
To hire Jane Romaker, full-time, $17 an hour plus benefits.
Motion by Councilmember Betcher, second by Councilmember Hattles, to hire Jane Romaker for a full-time staff position with benefits at $17 an hour. For the discussion? Bring now, on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Or is no? Motion carried.
Okay, the next item, the last item, is to change Michael's wages, to change the wage scale for him, to have his step one be $21 an hour. And then continuing on with the six steps, also change his job description to include doing building maintenance on the community center and take some of that away from the maintenance worker position and take that out of the community center budget. So it's only Michael's time in the community center budget. And we will revisit this when his six-month, when his six-month review period is up and look at his job description. And we will compare it to other planning and zoning positions.
So with that, there's nothing more than that, right?
Correct.
So it's a true test to how much time is going to be spent.
On maintenance here? No. But we're just taking away Mike Williamson's pay from the community center during this time period to try to keep that budget a little more in line.
So it'll help out the maintenance department?
It'll help out the maintenance department as well. Correct. Well, for Mike, for which Mike?
The maintenance.
The ma, Mike, the maintenance was one-third.
So just review it again. This one is $21.
$21 an hour will be his step one.
Beginning when?
Beginning Monday. Is everyone okay with it beginning next Monday? That's when I was going to have Jane start full-time. Yes, his current pay scale, he was at 1859 an hour right now. So we're gonna change the wage scale for him. So his step one would now change to $21 instead of 1859.
Yeah, the reality is, if we study that, we can talk about, I think.
Yes.
That'd be a subscription, still.
Yeah.
I'd agree.
I'll make a motion to everything he says. $21 an hour, eight-six months, changing the.
Job description.
Yeah, changing the job description and.
Community center budget. Mm-hmm.
And take effect, won't they?
Yeah, well, I'm certainly not gonna read that, so. Everyone understand the motion by Councilmember Haddles? Is there a second?
Oh, second.
Councilmember Gilman, any questions on that?
No.
How long has Mike been with us, just a couple months?
Since January 27th.
So does the probationary period doesn't start over as well, or?
Technically, yes, it would. If we changed his job, his probationary period would start again. But you could also, council could say that his probationary period is, still starts January 27th.
Is that only because of the change?
It's in, if we change his job description, that changes the probationary period.
Over revisiting it on the six months, I don't like.
That's when we could revisit if you want to change his probationary period and have him start.
When he's here, we're thinking about the concept.
Mm-hmm. Change that, extend, basically, you'd be extending it. Leave it as his starting date. I'm fine with that.
And then. Please. We better vote for it.
We better.
We have to change much more.
You won't know what you wanted.
Any further questions? If not, on paper, say aye.
Aye.
Or is no? Motion carried. All right, that's the extra stuff, right? Get into the committee member or council member committee updates, is there anything that we haven't talked about?
We had a cemetery committee on April 27th. Don't have the notes of the elected officers. But as far as the condition of the cemetery, everything seems to survive quite well. There is a question of planting a tree near the north gate. There's a wide gap on the west side of that north gate. Putting a tree in that space prevents any vehicles from being able to drive along the road. I did drive down there myself the other day. Everything looks to be all right. There was also discussion on, like, the northeast kind of border of it. It's, we got a brush and three of that area, that side that really kind of probably could be the side. Some plots that are right up against that inside border. So it's, it's, it's like, could get cleaned out on that end. North side's a little bit separated from the street or the roadway. Other than that, there was some cemetery management software discussion that's brought to the committee by Jane Romaker. And she thoroughly vetted a lot of these programs. Nothing was decided, though. We'll come at our next quarterly meeting, which I think is in July.
July 27th.
There's talks of that we can get together at the cemetery site, beyond the grounds ward, so. Also, Parks Committee meeting on the 27th. Alan covered most of that tonight, one that did, whatever, I think, was the conversation about budgeting and how the mower repair was, or replacement, displacement.
Didn't get split.
Was primarily coming out of the parks budget, despite the fact that it's used by other.
More by the cemetery.
Other committees like the cemetery. So perhaps something in the C I P slash budget slash ranking can try to sort out those allocations accordingly. When it's a shared item, that's, we just put it on the.
Sorry, anything about the, regarding, um, the, any topic about community, uh, or something?
That's in the budget, but I would probably comment with a question.
Hope it makes something you can look at.
Does that fall under Parks, not only community ed, or is that city as a whole?
I think, was it like $23,000 or something?
Correct. It's coming out.
There's somewhere around there.
It's about $23,000.
That rate hasn't gone up in the, you think, years that we've had it, so I'm assuming there's potential to change in there.
Okay, anything else on the cemetery report, works report? Anyone else?
Employee relations go past the wall.
Okay, everything that we already talked about.
Everything we talked about.
Came to this meeting tonight.
Anyone else?
Um, there was somebody, I don't know, my residents. Talk about viewable, I mean, there's some things that, you know, personally, they, you know. The, there was a temporary fence that was, that's still in place. And there were several items, like, you know, some of them, I, I personally, my personal take is, you know, their, their business, they're trying to operate them. Like the new equipment, personally, I don't, I don't know what our mandates are, but I don't see that as a, as needing a permit to, to put a piece of equipment in if they're not, you know, modifying the structure of the facility or in any way. But the, the tank is, you know, is potentially, you know, it is a risk. When I, when I first came to council, John Patterson had drove me around and that's something that kind of stood out. You know, there was a fence that was around there. It was there to try to keep people out. That was probably on request of the city, I'm guessing. I know Matt's mentioned some thoughts on maybe using that for something else, and maybe that's still, you know, relevant. But there, you know, there. You know, I don't know what our mandate is, but that is, that, that really is a potential risk. And obviously, we didn't have a dog to do it. Children was the item that, you know, that hit me when I saw it. Yeah, just, just drive through. So not sure what, what to really do, you know, how to really handle it, but. That is a pretty good risk.
And can't wait for a child to grow up.
It's more of a liability on their part. I think the residents have shared that, obviously, we know about it. I don't know, man.
Matt, do you have anything on order?
I can't, I was gonna leave this to the city administrator, we had the city attorney talk about that. The gal got everything on, that emailed multiple times in these meetings. The only thing I will address is the pet. Yeah, it is, it's, it's a sad thing that we found a dog. I was the one that brought the dog up to the vet and things like that and talked with the owner. It was a surprise to us to find the dog in there. It, it was catastrophic. Losing a, losing a pet. On that, yeah, there was a snow fence around there. No, I wasn't happy with the snow fence. We did have plans on changing that. It does have a steel fence around it now, no access, got to remove the steel there to get into there. It still does have the long-term plans of having a building over the top and being part of the unfolding process. But yeah, it, it, it's catastrophic that it happened. I feel for that family, told them that. But yeah, things, throughout the entire process here, you know, since, since they, they can talk about since I've been. And that was one of the things that happened during the winters, it froze. So then you can't pump water out when it froze. Doesn't matter waiting for it to melt and then getting a pump that was gonna be able to pump up the 20-foot. As soon as I was able to get a pump, I rented one, so that would be there. It's, it is too bad that it happened before the dog was there. The dog went and drowned.
Any other comments from anyone? One way or the other, anything? Hearing none, motion to adjourn first.
I'll make a motion to adjourn. Second.
Motion by Councilmember, member on rise, something by Councilmember Hattles to adjourn the meeting, on paper, say aye. Or is no? Meeting's adjourned at 8:35.